Oh, boy.
Maybe I gotta put the Bruins game on. Let's hope so. I bet they don't know about executive session.
He does. Yeah, I saw Kirby about an hour ago.
Yeah.
You can say just call a meeting to order. I mean, we're in open session and it's public.
It's called a meeting to order of the board of selectmen for Monday, March 24th, 2014. Like a motion started off so we can go into executive session. Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21, subsection A, clause three, to convene an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation since an opening, an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board and to convene an open session thereafter.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Mr. McCurdy?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
We're now in executive session.
There he is, see?
I'll tell ya.
Oh, yeah, yeah, mattress.
You guys can't see it up there?
Look at it now, it's a mattress commercial.
So glad to miss last week's meeting. It was just, that was just, it's just mind-boggling. What the hell, what's all this stuff? Actually, you know what? I hit the bedroom.
Oh, yeah. Well, listen. How are you? Thanks for coming. You know, we had so many people out there, right?
So what's...
Waiting for the chair again.
We've got electronics office.
I just want to show it off.
Okay. Right.
Hi, everyone. Hi.
You're on now, if you want to sing, I'll turn my...
No, no, I'm not singing, no.
You have a joke you want to tell?
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'll just run down the agenda, starting right after I read this. We're going to go to public input and board member updates. At 7:10, we're going to have a discussion with the town clerk regarding upcoming elections and ballot questions. At 7:30, we have a public hearing. And at 7:45, we will talk more about the annual and special town meeting and the order articles. And at 8:15, we'll hear from town administrator and assistant town administrators for finance and budget. And at 8:45, we have the consent agenda. And 9 o'clock, we are scheduled for executive session with town council. With that, actually, I forgot to read mail, so let's bring it to Keith. What do you have for us?
Mr. Chairman, just one letter, and it's a good one. It's a award of a grant in the amount of $1,250 for an automatic external distributor, AED, which you might recall, council on aging was asking for one in their wing of the building on the second floor. So I think it was Pamela Campbell that found the grant program to apply for, and we got the grant. So it's a reimbursement, but we just received word that we qualify and that we just have to buy it and send them the bill, so.
My understanding that plans purchasing it tomorrow would be...
Story is happy ending.
Yeah. When that first came up, I made a pledge, and I'll honor that pledge. I hope some other people help me with that, but that's great news.
Okay, we can turn to public input. Anybody here like to speak? It's obvious, you raise your hand.
No, no, I'm leaving.
Please, please.
We're going to have to hear from him.
He's going to talk.
You know.
He'll talk plenty later.
Don't egg him on.
Exactly, no encouragement required.
As we get to the articles.
Okay, all right. Alex, then, you have a floor for... I have nothing tonight.
Nothing.
Okay.
Yep, nothing at all? I'm good.
Wow, what a quiet.
Okay, now you're going to...
Not me?
You're going to tell a story?
Yeah, I'm going to take all the time now. What story do I have to tell?
I don't know.
Oh, no. I'm just going to say, we're continuing tonight with our electronic packets. We're experimenting with that, another quick turnaround, because I didn't ask for the electronic packet until about 8 o'clock this morning, and staff did a great job getting it to me. So with that, we can turn over to item four already, and back on schedule for town clerk. We have to discuss first the ballot question for the May 10, 2014 annual town election.
Right, and we will, we have had town council draw up the appropriate form that carries out the vote of last November's town meeting. And our only remaining action is to send it over to the town clerk to put it on the ballot. So town council has prepared the form. You might recall that the issue is the acceptance of the amended Community Preservation Act, which would allow, if ultimately accepted and adopted, would allow the town to vote to put other local receipts into the community preservation fund to expand the base from which the state matches calculated. It passed at November's town meeting. It needs to go on the ballot in May, and if it passes there by a majority of the votes, then we could go to a future town meetings, starting this fall, to actually put money into the fund. So, and we may, I think we may end up being the first community that accepts this amended language, because DOR is still working on the general guidelines to go out to all the communities and how to do this, so.
What impact if anyone have, if they, DOR changes?
I did forward this off to the department director today. And she, my rep forwarded it to legal staff.
So we have, yeah, Diane's dropped a date for getting to the...
Saying okay, we're good.
Yeah, and your deadline for getting your ballot to the printer is...
Thirty-five days ahead of the election, but...
Yeah, you need to get, you need to get it there, like, right away.
I need to, it's a rather late.
So.
They say it was the deadline for all candidates, so.
The real list is on the website now?
The most up-to-date list is on the website.
Standing. Okay. And do you have anything to, speaking to this first item here, 4A, the ballot question?
Like I said, the sooner I get it, the better.
Okay. Yes, sir.
May the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Article 13 of the November 4, 2013 special town meeting to direct that a binding question, ballot question, relative to the acceptance of the Community Preservation Act as amended, appear on the official ballot of May 10, 2014, annual town election, with form of said question and summary as prepared by town council.
Seconded. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, great. And now we go to the special town election to fill the selectman vacancy. As everyone's aware, there's only four of us right now, and Keith has been, has been out in the public, and he's made it clear to us exactly how this is filled, and it has to be a special election, and there are steps that we need to take, and we've asked for the recommendation from town clerk. So, Madam Clerk, if you'd like to summarize that for us.
So there are three dates that I've given. The first one is June 28, which is a Saturday. The next one is July 8, which is a Tuesday, and the third one is July 15, which is also a Tuesday. So the reason I'm looking for Tuesdays is because you're going to be hitting the summer. A lot of things happen on the weekends, once the warm weather starts, and I think that the turnout would be better if we had it during the week. Now, if a Tuesday doesn't seem appropriate, we can move it to a Wednesday, Thursday. It's not, nothing that we're actually held to, we can choose our own date. You actually have 64 days is the final day prior to the actual election, to actually call the special election. But then again, that's only, that's 15 days after the 49 days of the people turning their nomination papers. So you don't want to wait till the 11th hour to be making the call.
Yeah, one of the questions that had been asked was how, what's the, what are the deadlines, or why so, why is it such a short period between, between the time when someone has to pull out their papers and return them, and it's only a matter of days? But the real question, the real question is, how long do they have to decide to pull papers and actually go and circulate them? And that depends entirely on when the board calls the election, and so that they know that there is something to do. And under the statute, it's the selectmen's call, frankly, between now and May 10, of whether there is a special election or not, and if so, when. After May 10, it's no longer your sole decision, it's either you or 200 voters get to decide if there's a special town election held. You always get to decide when it is. You always get to decide when it is, though, but the question of whether an election gets held right now is totally your jurisdiction until after the, so you could, within this window, decide, yes, there will be a special town election, and it's going to be on such and such a date. And so we're hoping to be able to either send that signal one way or another, so that if there are 200 people out there who want to insist that there be an election, that we can send them a signal that, of which way the winds blow in.
I know this isn't popular, I know Keith has gone against it, and you were, you didn't make this as your recommendation, but one thing that I thought about is, we do have the September 10 date coming up. I understand that it's about between $2,000 and $4,000 to post and have an election.
Close, you're between $4,000 and $5,000.
Between $4,000 and $5,000. I think we had, well, I know we had Council on Aging in here last week, who was looking for $13,000, and, you know, we didn't know if we could find that, and I know a lot of people, a lot of towns' budgets are tight, and to have to come up with this money when we don't have to and spend more money on this issue is, to me, not worthwhile. I think the summer is a slower time. I think that we have at least three professionals stay on the board and likely to have another professional, and I think that, I want to throw it out to the board, September 10 would be the day, or...
It's actually September 9.
September 9, okay.
But I understand this.
I know not many people are going to agree with me, but I want, so I just want to make up my point. So I feel that, you know, it's slow, and I trust four selectmen, and I think because of the additional cost and the tight budgets, I think it's a good argument to wait until 9.
Well, so just to be perfectly clear, it's not going to change the cost, because it'll be a dual election, and what will actually end up happening is, we'll get less of a reimbursement for the September 9 state primary, because it's two separate elections being held on the same day. We have to pay for all of the printing, we have to pay for, the only thing you'll save, the police will save, because it's only going to be one day, and the school will save, because it's only going to be a janitor for one day. Everything else is going to be exactly the same. However, we will get half of our reimbursement that we normally get, so it'll actually end up costing us more money.
Why are you... Okay. Take my, I thought I agreed with that. You could have told me that in private.
I never thought it was pushed to go to September. No, it's just...
I think one of the valid points is that, you know, it's summer, it's slow. What kind of turnout are we going to get in the summer? So, you know, I sort of like the idea of doing it when there's an election, because that's when people are going to come.
Well, given that argument, I think it would be to have it, as soon as possible, try to get away from the summer vacations, schools out. I mean, just hearing now that it's going to cost, if I'm making my, you know, I'm looking at convenience of people, but I'm also looking at cost. So if we're looking at, September is actually more expensive because of reimbursement, things like that, than, or even if, even if you're telling me it's exactly the same to hold two as it would be to hold one, then it would, I guess, make sense to have it earlier, I would guess.
And the thing you push for...
It all comes down, it all comes down to when we're going to get a better turnout.
And the thing that you push for, if people are going on vacation, you push for that to do that, voting.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, everybody has the opportunity to ask to vote if they're not going to be in town. And we'd do the same thing for September, is you, you want them to all vote, whether they're there and physically voting on that day, or they're doing the voting prior to, you know, it's, the turnout's going to be the turnout.
There's a thing, it's a good, consider, when you said you have to double up everything.
Right.
I can just see the confusion of a lot of voters going in there, not understanding they have to do the same thing twice. They have to check in for the state ballot, then check in for the town ballot, and then what's going on? I mean, I can just, that would be a day from hell for us, as far as the, you work is going...
It's totally doable, but if you stop and think about it, you know how small that the school is, the gym. So now you're doubling the people that are working there in the same area. So the check-ins, there's two separate check-ins and two separate check-outs.
Based, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So based on the weather, we may have another school day, a snow day this week, and if in fact we do, I mean, they're looking at June, late June, school committee members?
23rd right now is the last day.
June 23. So vacation, as far as vacation starting, and folks going on vacation, their kids are still going to be in school, you know? If we get the snow we're talking about this week, and even if we don't, June 23 is just a day prior to the 24th, kids, people will still be around, so, you know, June 24th, as far as you said.
But we're looking for the 28th, so...
Oh, it says 24th.
It's updated, it's updated, sorry.
Because the 24th ended up being, because of the snow day thing.
Because of the snow days, they didn't, they wanted us to stay.
They didn't think, they actually didn't think they'd have the 24th available.
All right. So even still, the 28th, folks will still be around town, so I'd say, you know, as you said to Mr. Chair earlier, you know, get it done sooner.
All things being equal from what I hear, or more.
So, I have a question on the, so is the May 2 date, all nomination papers, the same date from 28, or is that from 24?
So you have, you have dates there that give you...
I didn't print the...
I have it right here. Saturday, if it's held June 20, correct me if I'm wrong. Last day to pull nominations paper would be May 8. Last day to return nominations papers would be May 12. Last day to register vote would be June 6.
So out of four.
So I'm wondering, you know, the only thing is, so we'll follow it to like 4, because it's just, that's not even, the regular election isn't even over, people, you know, would they overlap somewhat, is there going to be confusion?
That's what I was getting to, is we have a, we have a touch of overlap there of, and I wonder how confusing that would end up being with, you know, we vote today and we pull papers today, and we have to pull papers by...
Well, that would be the last day that they would, hopefully, they wouldn't be waiting till the last minute, but, you know, you never know.
First day, the first day, if you vote tonight, first day could be tomorrow. Well...
Right, exactly. And we've already closed out the May 10.
Yeah.
So there would be no confusion.
And then on May 5, we'd have, you know, I mean, here from all the potential candidates.
Then we have two elections going on, two sets of candidates running for two different times, running at the same time.
I think that's a, that's a point. I think the, you know, May 8 is a Thursday, so the Friday, and then Saturday is May 10, that's the election, so there...
It's only two day.
Yeah, it's only two-day overlap, and I think people wouldn't want to confuse, if anyone was running, wouldn't want to confuse, they wouldn't put signs out or anything before May 10, I would, I would think, because, you'd think, you never know. Some people buy signs before there's even a contested race, you know?
September sounded better and better.
No.
What's the board's pleasure?
I think July 8 just falls into July 4.
Yeah, I think the 28th, the June date, if we're going to go prior to September, I'd say the June.
I don't like that date.
Do you have an alternative?
You want a weekday? No, if you can't do Tuesday, what about a Thursday or Friday?
Or the weekend? Well, you don't like it because it's too soon, or you don't like Tuesday?
No, I think doing it on Tuesday, good weather, if we ever see it, is, is a good idea. And I think having an election on Saturday, when we get to good weather, is going to cause a lower turnout. So, you know, I'm sort of stuck between, well, what's going to give us a higher turnout? But I'm really worried about the confusion of, you know, somebody says, oh, yeah, someone's on, someone's over running. Are they running for the special election, are they running for the regular election? And some of them might even go to polls, looking for a name on a ballot, but it's not. And that's what I'm worried about. So I understand that July 8 is probably just about time, everybody's going to be wanting to head out.
Well, be on vacation.
So if we move it to July, I mean, July 1 is the same problem as July 8, I guess, if we do that? If we're moving it to July 1, that's the Tuesday following the Saturday, which would cause, the last day to turn in papers would be after May election, after the election's over. But any candidate's already thinking about it and putting papers in anyway.
Not until you...
No, there's no election.
Well, the election, because there is no election as of right now.
No, but I mean, if it's May 8, I mean, even if you're, if you're running, you're working on this before May 8 anyway, if you're running, so. Before you put your papers in. Well, your papers didn't begin before then.
That's the last day to pull papers, isn't it?
Yeah.
So you can pull them up till May 8.
Yeah.
They have to be turned in, and what was that date?
4...
May 28.
28.
28, the last day to pull is May 8, last day to put them in is May 12.
There you go.
And the last day to register, June 6. I mean, it's lesser of two evils, I think we're at. I don't like Saturday, I'm more, you know, I mean, I'm more likely to vote, I'm more likely to vote on Saturday than a Tuesday. I mean, I'm not going to miss it, but I would, Saturday is much easier for me. What, what you thinking? You haven't said anything?
I see as two, you know, complete opposites, either the early one or the one in September. I think July, education-wise, is, is out.
So we're down to between, it seems to be, Alex, between either 28 or September 9. I don't know if you have a preference between those. I know you...
September, May, or June, you mean?
June 28 or September 9.
June 28 or September 9.
It's kind of where the...
Unless you want to do it in the middle of the summer.
Right.
June is...
And does this board want to do the entire summer with four, not five?
Well, you're right, also, 200 people would come up and tell you to pull it, too.
Well, but if you've made the decision that's, that hold a special election in September, I think that quashes the petition, because you've, you would have satisfied what they're asking for. You still get to decide when the election is.
Also, if we...
The petition is not to tell you to hold it on a certain date, the petition is to tell you to hold a special election, which you're doing. Now you're deciding when it is.
I agree. I mean, again, June, people are still around, kids are still just getting out of school. June 28 is, um...
Good recommend.
Maybe too, because the first election gets done with, people who are running have that full month to do, do the campaign, and just like you said, Mr. Chairman, if you are running a consenting, you've already done your background. So that's probably like a favorite date, but I would, I would probably say a little early.
I think we, I think we're just between a rock and a hard place. I don't think we have any good options here, and I think the lesser of three or four evils is going to be June 28, Saturday.
So do you know what is that?
What's that?
To you, what is that?
Which Saturday?
Which one would you pick?
Saturday, June 28, sorry. The lesser of...
Saturday.
Saturday, right? Yeah.
Yeah, Saturday, June 28.
Yeah, they're doing Tuesdays.
I mean, still have soccer going on, you're going to still have all the, no, you don't have soccer, sorry. But, anyway.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Moving at the board of selectmen, vote pursuant to Mass General, Chapter 41, subject intended for the special town election for June 28, 2014, to fill a vacancy on the board of selectmen, expiring at the May 16, 2016, Annual Town Election.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane.
Thanks, Diane.
You're welcome.
Diane thanks you for picking the right date.
Oh, we didn't, yeah. All right. 7:30, we have a public hearing. Um, yeah. You want to, we have a couple minutes.
Can we start on Thursday and July?
There you go. Five minutes? Yeah, well, it's, no, 7:29, close enough?
Looks like 7:30.
All right. I guess 7:30 here on the...
I guess 7:30.
All right, thank you. All right, let me find it first, all right.
I have it right here, wasn't it?
I know, I know.
Oh, you have the technology.
No, no, it's operator, er, it's not technology.
We have to wait longer.
Not really.
All right. Now it's 7:30, ready? Okay.
7:31.
Time being 7:30, I will call the public hearing for a common victor license application, Sub-Littleton Inc., DBA Subway, 287 Great Road, Littleton, Massachusetts. The board of selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, March 24, 2014, at 7:30 PM, in room 103 of the town offices building, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, to consider the application of a common victor license, as requested by Dimple Desai, Sub-Littleton Inc., DBA Subway, 287 Great Road, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the selectman, town administrator's office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, by noon Friday, March 21, 2014, in person, or in person at the hearing. All interested parties are invited to attend. Ted P. Duzette, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, and this was published on March 13, 2014, in the Littleton Independent. And Keith, did we receive any written...
We just, we just got one.
This one? Okay. But there's nothing received by Friday?
No.
Okay.
It was in person at the hearing.
Okay. Um, I will just stay, because we haven't had time to read this, we probably should have an idea what it says, but it's from Nathaniel Whitney, who is on 25 Robinson Road. Give us a couple minutes, he's going to scan it. Okay, so this, well, let's hear from the proponent first.
The applicant.
Yeah, the, so the application was found to be complete, and we have comments from police chief, and from fire, from building. Okay. Okay. Mr. Desai?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Desai.
Hi. I'm here for common victory license, and this is my 12th location in Littleton, and I have two already enacted in nearby places, so I'm applying for common victory license.
Okay.
Do you say you have other subways or other...
Yes, other subways. I have two enacted already. That's the nearest one. I have one in Marlboro. That's, this will be my 12th location.
Okay. All right. Does everything?
Anything else?
Yeah.
Freshies?
Um, does the board have anything? It seems pretty straightforward, so I want to go through, I'll go, I'll cover this, if you want to.
I was just going to ask if she was aware of...
Oh, sure, go ahead, you can take it.
Are you aware of what the others' issues are?
We were just handed a letter, I didn't know if you'd received the letter.
No.
Because if not, you may have this one. Thank you.
Can you give a minute to read that?
Sure. The comments we did get by Friday were, no issues from the fire chief, no issues from the building commissioner, and the police chiefs said that there were no issues which would preclude the issuance of the license.
And this is required because it has transferred, it's changed, it's sold, right?
Well, it, the license is issued by the board, and if, and if there's a new owner, then it requires a new license. Under our procedure, we hold public hearings.
Yes.
Not, not everybody does, but our town does for a common victor license.
Who's the current owner? I can't remember his name.
Chris, Chris Simone.
Chris Simone.
Chris Simone.
We were wondering.
Chris Sewell. Chris Sewell.
Yeah.
He's been there for about four, five years.
Yeah, he worked there before, yeah, yeah.
Can I make a, a comment?
Uh, yeah, just a minute, we'll take public comment. I usually go through the Board, you don't take public comment. What are the current operating hours?
Uh, it's seven to 10, I would believe, Monday through Friday, and that's usually what we do is, and Saturdays eight to 10, and Sundays are nine to nine.
What's on the doors?
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Um, is, and that's your, what's the application, what's your application to do with it?
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Well, that's different. She said, on the application, it says Saturday, eight to nine.
That's eight to nine, broadly, then, yeah.
Is that what you want? Eight to nine? So it's, so you're saying Monday through Friday, seven to 10?
Yep.
Yeah, Saturday, eight to nine, and then Sunday, nine to nine.
Nine to nine.
Okay. And that's what we understand it currently is?
Right.
Okay.
Vote comments, or?
Uh, Alex was letting her be though, so I don't know if he had anything. Do you wanna pick up now, Alex? Do you have any questions?
Um, if you've had a chance to read it, would you have any response to any of the concerns with the others?
Um, I can definitely work what is concern about the trash, I guess, trash cans and the snow plowing. We can take care of all those things for him.
Well, is the snow plowing, is that your responsibility, is that the owner's responsibility? Because you don't own the building.
I, I'll be the own, not, I'm, but it's under my lease that I have to take care of.
You have to plow, you have to clear snow, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
From the new lease. Yeah, I mean, the snow plowing, it's easily, we can tell the plow person not to go there. And trash cans, it will be any, you know, the regular companies that surround, and they will pick up every, I mean, every week.
Yeah.
That's, that's usually we do at my location, so we can expand it. Trash pickup will be every week.
Okay. I think the, one of the concern is that, you know, is there anything, I know you have, there's a couple tables out there, so is there a place for people to deposit their bags and things before they leave? Actually, 'cause it's picking tables, right? There's picking tables outside of the trees?
Yeah, I think I've not-
Yeah. So is there a trash, we wanna make, is there a trash can out there so that people have, you know, before they jump back in the car?
We can do that. I have not been in that property too much, so I'm not aware too much, so, but we can take care of that, definitely.
Alex, did you wanna continue with Julie?
No, if she's willing to address these issues, and that's really my question, was, will she, I mean, a bit about alcoholic beverages, that's not up to her, that's up to us, but-
Right.
Um, everything else, um, with the exception of the 9:00 PM-
Right.
Closing time.
Right. So you're not, you're not pushing that one, and what about the white stockade fence?
Well, I'm, what I'm hoping that I will hear here is that the two of them will work together to iron these things out.
Right.
Yeah, we'll call this Mr. Nathan for sure. I did not got this letter before, so-
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that there was a new owner, and we've had a pretty good relationship in the past with the previous owner.
Okay.
So I'm sure we can work that out.
Joe, do you mean?
Other than, we didn't have any letters before this, and I think it's pretty straightforward, so they can take care of those things, I'm just-
Yeah. Well, I think it's a try. I don't, I wanna make clear that we're not imposing anything on her. We're not imposing anything about the changing the hours, not imposing, and forcing them to put up a fence. That's, I wanna make that sure. And you've agreed to, you know, be better, to be cognizant of the, of the trashes out there.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same things Alex did. And we, you know, reading over the list, if you can work with the, your neighbor, work out the issues, and I was gonna say about the plowing, but it sounds like your lease has your responsibility to do the plowing, too, so now you don't have to worry about that.
Right, so it's easy just to tell the guy to not put-
Sure. Not a problem.
Okay. Any comments from the-
And as I said, this is my 12th location, so we work with a lot of other landlords and some of the neighbors.
Neighbors.
Yeah, sure. All right. Any, any comments from the public? You satisfied with the letter?
Just that I'd like to handle it that way, too, just as neighbors.
Okay. All right, great. Okay.
Ready?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 140, subsection six, to approve the application for Dimple Desai, Sub, uh, Sub Littleton Inc., doing business as Subway, for a common, common particular license for premise on 287 Great Road, Littleton.
Second. Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck.
And we'll talk to each other.
All right. So we're on to, uh-
We gotta close the public hearing, right?
Oh, yeah, she closed it first, right?
Any motion to close the public hearing? Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So I gotta think that all our-
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah. All right. Now we're on to the special town meeting and annuals, uh, town meeting. Order the articles, post, recommend.
Um, yeah, there, um, a few things to do tonight. One is a procedural one, and that is to finalize the order in which the articles appear. They're in the same order in which we, the previous drafts have appeared, and following the recommendation of the voter study committee, which was to have financial articles first, then super majority articles next, followed by all other. We've kept that order once again. If that is acceptable to you, we have the warrants ready to be executed tonight and posted tomorrow. And we can, so part of the motion as well is to direct that the, the articles be ordered and then, and then directed to the, to the constable for posting. The, the second thing that we'd like to ask you to do tonight, there are a number of departments or boards that you haven't heard from yet with financial articles, and we don't actually have that much time before we have to put out the town report with recommendations. So part of the time tonight was to hear from the, and we have the Water Department here, we have the Community Preservation Committee, including Historical Commission, who has a project under the CPC, and also the Park and Racket, who also has a, a project under Community Preservation. So, so as part of the discussion tonight, there's a chance for you to hear from those whom you haven't heard from before. Everybody else, not to the exclusion of anyone else, but we've gone through the capital projects, you've gone through every, all the other money articles in the world, but you've not heard from, from those that I, that, that are, that are here tonight to have a push to you.
Okay. Unless the Board has something, we can move to the Community Preservation Committee?
There you go.
All right. Everyone here has begun that?
Do you wanna adopt a procedural motion first? The order, unless you wanna change the order.
No, we're not gonna change the order. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the order in which the articles appear on the warrants for May 5th, 2015, annual towns, annual and special town meetings, with financial articles first, those requiring super majority votes next, followed by all other, including authorizations and reauthorizations, and to direct the constable to post said warrants forthwith.
Second. Motion been made in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Good. My name is Mitt Wanzar with the Community Preservation Committee, and, well, there's two things that I'd like to just make available to you, and I'm happy to comment on. One is the, the variety and scope of projects that we had this year, that they're being brought under one article, which would be our budget for this year to town meeting. And then, so those would be, and, and I can sort of be the front person in a way to, to the various other committees, like Keith alluded to. The projects are varied. There's a historic project, there's housing projects, there's a recreation project, which is a large one, and the historic reconstruction of the long store, which is in the planning stages. So, that's one thing I'd like to make myself available for, is just to answer your questions, to say, the Board of Selectmen are prepared to support your budget article if, you know, if you felt comfortable to, and that all these questions could be answered, it would help greatly in town meeting, how the Board of Selectmen approve, or lend their support for that. The second thing is, I wanted just to take the opportunity to note at this point in time, summarizing what the year has been for us, to sort of look a little further down the road and say that the Community Preservation Committee would love your support to find ways to channel new revenues into the account so that we can take advantage of the changes to the Community Preservation Act that were enacted recently, that the town will vote on separately, as, so that once the town votes to enact those changes locally, then we can start to direct funds and bolster our funds, double it, maybe even triple it, because right now it's a 1% surcharge for real estate in town. We can go up to 3% equivalent with additional funds that are channeled into us. So, I've prepared a statement on that, too. So, what can I do for you, answer any questions there?
Um, I think if you wanna just, do you wanna run through the budget, and what you have coming up, and-
Sure.
You're waiting for requests?
I'll, I'll list the projects and describe them briefly, and I think I'd be more comfortable if I talked off the numbers. The, there was a couple projects that came to the Fall Town Meeting. I just wanna note, we have 300 King Street for $200,000 was approved, the archival storage vault, that was on the Fall Town Meeting also. Congregational Church Meadows was approved for the Fall Town Meeting, and Regional Housing Services was a $15,000 grant to be a partner with them, and that was approved at Fall Town Meeting. The Congregational Church Meadows was a bonded project, so it's a many hundred thousand dollars. It'll carry over the years, and we'll pay debt service to that through our funds. This year, we, we had, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight projects, so that's a real record for us. Scenic farmland restoration on Great Road, there's some meadows to be created by clearing invasive species plants, and that was brought by the Littleton Conservation Commission. The funding was, would be up to $40,000 for that. The Morgan Property feasibility stop, study, Parks and Recreation Commission and Community Education Commission would like to start a study on using the Morgan property as possible playing fields, and so that's $18,000 plus. 300 King Street, continuation and completion of that project required another $232,000, so Parks and Recreation Community Education Commission wanted to see 300 King Street brought, made a reality, and they came back to us in a recent funding cycle, and that will come to Spring Town Meeting. That's probably about half of what, well, that, that piece, I can comment on more later. Time Tree Park, bath sinks replacement, along with Patriot Circle, tree removal and siding, and fire blocking around the furnaces in Patriot Circle, were three different projects that were brought to us by the Littleton Housing Authority and approved by the committee. Those are all in a $5,000 to $10,000 range. Two more projects, the long store reconstruction, restoration is in the feasibility stage, and a study is being funded by Community Preservation for $20,000, and we supported that, and that will come to Spring Town Meeting. In addition, restoration of stained glass windows, which is at the Littleton Congregational Church, we intend to support that about at, it's possibly an $80,000 project or a $90,000 project. We were able to give it a little over $45,000. They may stage the project, but they're happy to go forward with the support of our money, 'cause it's part of their larger restoration or rebuilding of the community spaces in their meeting house, which is a $1 million project. So, our little contribution to that was $45,000. And that was the, the flurry of business that we had recently.
Okay.
Does anyone have any comments on that, Mr. Boyd?
Um, so, this is extraordinary, this year. A number of projects and stuff like that, and you're drawing down your reserves pretty significantly. Did you discuss the implications of that? Are you comfortable with drawing yourself down to that level? One of the things I'm concerned with, with what you're presenting.
Yeah, I think we are, because our, we sort of, we're not tied to approach the projects in any other way. I think we, we felt that due diligence was to see projects that, whether they were meritorious on their own basis, and if we could afford them, if they met the qualifications that we could bring it to town meeting. There are a few communities that I'm aware of that, that right into their bylaws, the Community Preservation Committee by town would say, "We intend to do our business in a certain way so that a fraction of our money would go like this, and a fraction of money would go like that." It's turned out that year to year, we funded things very differently. In one year, we funded open space disproportionately, might say, to other things, and this year, it's recreation. What you're pointing out, though, is the fund going to, is, is being drained in a way. The, going into this year, we had about a half million dollars that we hadn't spent, and then, and now it's close, closer to zero, and we're using reserve funds that are from previous years, because we had very light applications, and, and that, we noted that, but I don't think we have any real stance on that. I, I do wanna note that the other thing I'll comment on tonight was that moving forward would really help, that we can make our, our budget more like half a million dollars every year, rather than in the $100,000.
I'm sure a ton of people in Rome are thinking the same sort of thing about their budget.
Yeah, yeah. Well, but, and the, the reason being is that our, our budget serves others in the town, and, and we also get the state match for our funds, anywhere from 25 cents on the dollar is on average, so that whenever a project is paid for, we see CPA funds. It's a real cost-saving thing for anybody in town.
So you've had no dialogue about trying to have a certain amount of reserves on hand in a given time?
We felt we couldn't say no to any of the applicants. For instance, well, a lot of them were town applicants, so it was really to serve in-house needs. There was urgency to the Recreation Commission's project that they were midstream and really needed to bring it to completions. 300, 300 King Street is a really ground-up project. It's not, it's not maintenance, it's not adding bells and whistles to some site that is already being used. This is a site that was, some people have described as a brownfield, and, and when you, when you remove the tennis courts and stuff, it could just remain as an empty lot, or you could replace them with basketball courts and stuff like that, and make it a really useful project. So, that one, I don't, I don't think there's any other pot of money for them to go to, so we, we felt obliged to fund that. The one person that we could've turned back, we sort of scaled back a lot, that was the Congregational Church. So, their, their application was for $90,000 or something, and we said, "Well, right now, we've worked the numbers, and we can afford to drain this budget, we will, but we'll just give you $45,000." And it makes me a little uncomfortable, but I also, I think it's fitting in the way that we've done business in the past, that the people who come to us, who are eager to support it, we will.
If I can say, I actually like the diversity you have here, where it's growing up, where it's going to different places, from open space, community housing, historic and so forth, and, and I'm happy to see that some of your funds are being used for, to the act of recreation. So, no one wants to see everything drained down, but I see a lot of value in, in what you've put forth in money for the things that are needed.
My only concern is, we get debt service covered, so long as debt service is covered year to year. I think, you know, we put a Community Preservation Committee together to make these decisions, to take the applicants and to make decisions and make recommendations to this board. So, through your, your job and your due diligence, you see that these projects come through. I agree with Mr. Knox in regards to the diversity of it. It's great to see 300 King Street coming through, and the Rec Department does a great job, and I know that'll get used a lot. So, you know, Community Preservation money, the 1% that the, the tax payers deposit into that account is for the community. We've, we've bought land, we've bought open space, we've done recreation, we've done historic preservation. It's working, so, and when the money's gone, the money's gone. That's, that's what it is, and you have to wait till the next year. So long as we have the fundings to pay down our debts, I'm okay with it.
I think there's a lot of good projects on here. There's one that, unfortunately, from my, from the way I look at things, I don't feel that should be funded in here, and that's gonna be Congregational Church. I mean, I think this is 1% of the taxpayer funds that are being used for private property, and there's been other issues everyone well knows that I've been against. There's been, you know, taxpayer funds used for, to support a few people and to support private property, and I think there could be a better use. I think that, you know, I am, I feel that I'm partially in charge of the town's funds, and I don't feel it's right to spend taxpayer funds on private property, and therefore I can't support the Congregational Church stained glass. I know it'll probably take heat for it, but that's the way I stand. I know it's, you know, it's a church, and it's a, you know, it's a charity. I think we have, you know, a lot of other churches that do things in town on their own, and actually give money to the town- own and actually give money to the town and support the town in other ways, and for us to just give private property that much money, I'm just not in favor of that. It's against my, I don't know, code or my standards, so that's where I'm at. As far as, you know, the whole CPA and CPC, I always think it as being, you know, Community Preservation, I see a lot, you know, Seymour for farmland, but I know it can be used for places like Patriot Circle and Pine Tree Park, and I know those are places that are having a lot of difficulties now, so it's completely valid, and those are, you know, I believe town, town-run properties, and I think that everything else here looks pretty good, it's just the Congregational Church that I can't, the private property I can't support, so.
I just have the question, who put the request in for the congregation? Was it the church themselves?
Yes, it was, and Warren Terrell came to us, followed the process, presented a lot of good information, and if I could comment, Mr. Terrell?
Sure.
On the merits of that project, there are, the stained glass windows are significant historically because their age and a building that's listed in town as its historic structure, but also because each one, a lot of them are probably created through memorial funds, and they list the names of different people in town who are, names that a lot of people might recognize as citizens of the town during one generation or another. Furthermore, two of the stained glasses list all the pastors, so they document in a way the history of that community within ours. And also furthermore, the, this isn't a single project, there are different things. For instance, we funded the Baptists, the restoration of the Baptist church tower, clock face.
I wasn't in favor of that either, but yeah.
I feel like I would only, that I would support the next group to come down who had a similar historic structure, and it would only be fair.
Well, fairness is once you start down, once you start down the road, you do someone's tower, you do someone's clock, then you do someone's window, and the next phrase of fairness is, "Okay, what we did for them, we got to do for them." But, you know, when you say that it's, you know, stained glass, it's, you know, I understand historical, it's their stained glass, and it's historic, it's their pastors, and you're serving a very small subset of this community with funds that the entire community has put in. So, that's where my philosophy comes, you know, I think that if the community puts all the money in, it should benefit all of the community. But, thank you very much for.
And in regards to that, I know we had Town Council draft some documentation in regards to letting the folks for the church tower, the clock tower, we had some document that...
We have a grant agreement, it's not a, that we use for the...
Would it be appropriate to draft something for this also?
Yeah, rather than what the alternative would be, which is a deed restriction, which typically goes where CPA funds are used, but we made the judgment in the case of the, of the Baptist clock tower, that because of the Dollar Mountain Ball, was it twenty-five thousand dollars, I think, that, that didn't, that didn't buy you forever, so we entered into a maintenance agreement with them for a finite period.
Which I think would be appropriate for this also.
It would too. We need to address that, so thanks for pointing it out.
The question is whether we do that, can we get that done prior to town meeting? So it can be presented?
I think we could get a verbal agreement of sorts, probably.
Yeah, we'd have no authority to enter into that agreement till after the, till after the vote.
Okay.
We could certainly, we could certainly share with, with the Congregational Church, with the document that the Baptists signed, that we'd be looking for a similar agreement.
Would this be an okay time to just relate another two minutes' statement?
Regarding?
Just about future funding.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to put one project in perspective, helps give us perspective for other projects in the future. I think Three Hundred King Street is really interesting because it's a medium-sized project that's, as I said, from the ground up. The total price tag was over four hundred thousand dollars, and it's something that we could remarkably, as pointed out by Mr. McCurdy, afford out of pocket. Although we drained our funds, we were able to pay for it without bonding and without borrowing. So, it's remarkable for those, for that reason, that we were able to fund it so readily this year. It being a medium-sized project, I think, is my opinion, I think it's that something like Morgan property is going to be a much larger project, many times larger, so that if we are looking in the future to pay for recreation projects, active recreation even with CPC funds, we're going to need to bolster the funds. When we've paid for open space projects, we've, they're much larger projects, so that we're, we're going into debt and using CPC funds to do the debt service on them, and that's a more sort of conservative approach that we need to take, so that over time, we measure out, we can only take on so many open space projects because of their size. If we could bolster the funds by adding revenue sources, we could continue to take on open space, new open space that came available, and depending on its scale, and we could also support recreation projects that were a little bit bigger. We may have to borrow for things like Morgan property, I don't really know, but it seems like if it, if it was four or five times the size of Three Hundred King Street, then we'd probably have to, because we did spend some of our savings in approving this round of funding. So, I encourage you to think as a board, and I'd be happy to come back and give a similar sort of encouragement for you guys to consider how we could divert funds from things like other revenue sources within town that were legitimate to put into the Community Preservation Fund, so that we'd get the state match, and we'd get twenty-five cents on the dollar for anything that we could spend in approved projects.
You identify a revenue source, and we can consider it. I know right now, Keith, we have some money coming in from the 40P, right? There was a, there was a payment made, and certain amounts of those are earmarked for...
There are some funds that have come in through host community agreements. There was, there will ultimately be sixty thousand dollars coming in from the Reed Meadow one, which is intended for housing. That can go into the Community Preservation Fund and come out for housing. We have a hundred thousand dollars that we've received right now, that's earmarked from Fifteen Great Road for recreation, that too can, could go into the CPA fund and come out for recreation use. There's other funding under that host community agreement, which has not been determined what it'd be used for, so.
But there's some that are earmarked for certain uses that can be...
Summary earmark.
Kind of go through the black box of Community Preservation, you get that twenty-five or thirty percent.
Right, it wouldn't require that we wait, assuming that the voters approve the ballot question on May tenth, we would have to vote, we would have to wait until November to vote to put that money into the CPA fund, but it would be worth the wait because we'd get, you know, well...
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, somewhere between twenty-five, it's, it's a lot more than what you can get putting it in a bank.
And during that, during that timeframe, what did you talk about? I know there's been talk about the cell tower money too, so.
Oh, we get to Community Preservation.
I think it's always on our minds, it's just that revenue sources are hard to come by these days.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to say? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to Park and Rec, but you want to comment on this stuff first?
Yeah, I have a question. Gerald Baker, Grisnell Road. How much of our future CPA funds are already committed? Because I, I think some of the church meadow was done bonded, so we've already sort of spent some of our future piece there, so could you maybe just comment on how many, how much money's already committed?
We talked about this once in a while, but...
Sure. We have a couple of projects that were authorized by debt service, the Yap acquisition, the COB, and the Church Meadows. And the Church Meadows we're financing actually over five years to try and accelerate the debt service coming off quicker, so that we're not committing that funding out over a long term. The Yap and the COB, I think were twenty-year notes that were done a few years ago, so we're just a short period into them. And so basically, we, we receive about two hundred and eight thousand dollars in annually from the one percent surcharge, which is up from about a hundred and thirty thousand prior to applying the charge to the commercial industrial parcels. Right now, this fiscal year, we have a hundred and twenty-seven thousand going out in debt service payments. So, you know, there is a delta, but it's, you know, it's shrunk a little bit. Once that Church Meadow debt of about sixty-five thousand a year is paid off in five years, then that'll provide some relief within that category. So, we had, we started with a balance of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in CPC funding, or we're starting for fiscal fifteen. We're getting in another two hundred and eight thousand from the surcharge, and we're going to spend five hundred and twenty between the debt service and these projects that are identified here. So, the ending balance at the end of fifteen will be about sixty thousand dollars. Most of that will be in the community housing bucket. We've pretty much exhausted all of the other buckets. What's not here is the state match that comes in September sometime. We can't program that as additional revenue and spend it in this fiscal year because they can always cut it, so you can't actually spend it until you get it. But we're anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars for that, so that'll be available next year, so.
And that money gets broken into the different buckets, so.
Okay. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, so basically, half a percent of the one percent is committed to debt service.
Pretty close, a little more maybe?
Yeah.
A little more? Okay.
I'm Linda Stein, I'm a member of the Historical Commission.
I have a bit of a concern with the way that the CPC projects will be presented at town meeting. I think the warrant article looks fine, they're all, the individual projects are divided out, but I think, I've heard that the CPC projects may be presented as, as one package, and that voters might only have the chance to vote on everything as one package. And I think that the voters deserve to review the merits of each project individually and vote on each project individually. Some people may like one project and not another, and may vote down the whole package because of that, and, you know, we do have a project coming up at the town meeting under the CPC, and I would hope that each project would be voted on individually, or that voters would have the opportunity to vote on each project individually at town meeting.
Exactly what I'm facing tonight. Keith, do you want to talk?
Yeah, the voters at town meeting get to decide how they want to do it. We will go into town meeting seeking the answer yes, and we will accept a yes, one blanket yes for the whole article, which is what we've, which was what we've asked for and gotten every, every year thus far. If the voters have questions or concerns about a particular article and want to pull it out and vote on it separately, and not vote with the group, that that motion is, is something that could be offered, and the moderator could, could entertain such a motion. But typically, what we do is that there's a, the CPC will make a short presentation of all of the projects that, you know, there might be one slide on, on each one or something like that, so there'd be plenty of opportunity to get information out to the voters, but, but at the end of the day, the voters at town meeting get to decide how their, how they, how their time is conducted. If no one has a problem with any of it, we typically, you know, we will take yes for an answer, you know, we'll, we'll take the vote and go forward, but if people have questions and they want to pull one out, the voters there at the town meeting can ask to have it voted on separately. I would, I would hate to see us have to vote on each and every one of these separately, that if, that if there's questions about one, that let the, let the floor pull out the one and have a discussion and vote on that separately, but that'll get decided on at town meeting.
Keith, we have two people in the room at least tonight that would like, you know, to have it broken out at least somewhat. Is there any way to make a note to the moderator now?
Oh, we've already submitted the question to him.
To, but to make him, to ask him to make that clear that he can call it out?
Right, we've already, we've already posed that question, we forwarded the concerns that have been, that have been raised, and he will, it's his jurisdiction to deal with that, but he's, he's aware of the desire to have it be voted on separately. And he's written, and he's received emails that we've received.
I think he handles it like we do the operating budget.
Yeah, you call, call it out, yeah.
So, I mean, if that, that way there, if there are concerns for any particular aspect of the spending of the CPC, they can just say, "I have a concern." They table it, and vote on everything else, and then go back and discuss the issue.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. All right. We're all set with that, we can move on to Park and Rec? Anybody here wishing to speak on Park and Rec?
You'll take, you'll take the money too.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm available to answer any questions about the Three Hundred King Street project or our budget in general, and I did provide a memo at the end of last week, which I have copies for, to follow up on the castle and the trees discussion that we had in January.
Right.
So, if you haven't received that, I can bring that up, and if you have, then I can sit down.
I think we've had it, I don't know if we wanted, just to give a summary, another summary for the public, I think we basically know where it was, where there was a, for a couple items, there was a fifty thousand dollar request in increasing your budget, right? Is that where we were?
Yeah, some trees.
No, for total Park and Rec.
Are you talking about the operating budget?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, but not there yet.
Okay, all right. Okay. Does anyone for Park and Rec?
Looks like we're okay with the big, CDC project you're asking.
Okay, is there any direction on what you want to do for, for schedule for a future meeting about the older castle and the trees?
Did we already make a decision on that also?
No.
No, no, actually, you referred them to the CPC to get some money for handicapped accessibility.
Yeah, that's not going to be, I mean, I gave you a memo, that's a synopsis, and you can pass these around, this is if I can pass.
I think we're going to have...
The general...
Schedule of future.
Yeah, I mean...
This will be, yeah, this will be post, post-town meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Ready to move on to?
Water.
Water. There we go. Who do you want to start?
Thank you, you got the floor.
Well, let's start with the special funding articles. The first one is Article Three, and that is the DEP Sustainable Water Management Initiative Grant Reimbursement. We received a grant, ninety-eight thousand dollars reimbursable, over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, remainder of that being in-kind service of Littleton Water Department employees, to look at the, look at the sustainability of water withdrawals and impact on stream flow, which is going to be a very, very big issue for all towns with groundwater resources, as well as have a significant impact on future development communities. This is just the tip of the iceberg of something that could be very, very devastating towards the development of, of properties out here on 495. That's how big this is. It's new regulations coming in, and we got a grant to study the impact of these regulations and how we, being a very progressive community, such as purchasing open space and those kinds of things, some of the tools that we may be able to employ to help minimize those, those impacts of stream flow that are being attributed to water withdrawals. It's a real big issue, and I could spend an whole night talking about it. To make, long story short, long story long, this is a, asking town meeting to, to transfer from water surplus, the ninety-eight thousand plus dollars, to be able to pay the bills, knowing that when we reimburse, when we submit those bills to the DEP, they'll be reimbursed to us. So, it's just, it's just a transfer of money for basically thirty to forty-five days before the money comes in, because the grant is due to run out June fifteenth, so we have to spend the money in order to get the money back. So, it's pretty much a housekeeping article, nothing more than that. The second one's brand new, it just happened, and I brought a little show and tell over that, but I won't put it up. It's a, we've done this once before in my tenure here, and it is basically, and we're going back to the point, and the development of the properties, the infrastructure along the point, during the grant process, which the town is an excellent opportunity, public private partnership between the town and, and the developer through state grants, the water infrastructure was taken out of the grant, the town money, and developers has put all the infrastructure in, both electric water and everything else, after the town's might ran out, and Keith and Bondi are very much involved in that, from the town's perspective. But one of the things that we need to have done is we need to have the water main installation across 495, the bridge at 119, 495. And the reason why that needs to be done is because our new treatment plant, a three-point million dollar investment is coming online next month, and as soon as we have that infrastructure done, that, that is connected in yellow, then quicker we'll, we'll have a second wave in the water in the town, and a very weak link being the Russell Street Bridge crossing. So, developer had agreed to do this work next year, not this year, next year. So, developer had agreed to do this work next year, not this year, next year, and we believe that it is, it is too late to wait a year. It will now allow us the full value of our investment. Fire flow protection for not only the subdivision, but a whole part of town is impacted by not having that connection and other things that part of prudential practice. So, we offered to take out the bond, make it a municipal project. The water department will take the bond, though, with town meeting approval, but the full cost of the bond will be paid back by the developer, by the owner of property. And, it'll all be codified in, in contracts in advance of town meeting. And, nothing, or frankly, before the money's borrowed, if it can be done at town meeting. We've done this before on the corner of Russell Street, on the corner of Foster Street and Taylor Street. There are the seven properties, including Digital, back in the days of Digital, XRE, Maldo's property, as well as the Monarch Development. All those properties have very poor water flow. He was the, no, he might have not been in the nineties. Alex might have been the fire chief. But, those developers, after those projects, developed very, very low water flow because the water came into town, that area, the back area. And, they would have to spend a lot of money on fire pumps and fire ponds in order to have proper airflow. They came to us and said, "We work together." So, we took out a special betterment assessment to those properties. Even though smaller properties and residential properties were positively affected and that whole part of town, the betterment was paid off completely by those developers. And, so, the betterment had that chemistry, you know, had that language in it. So, this is really a similar, similar process. There'd be no impact to rapiers at all. Well, frankly, to taxpayers, just to, one person or one entity, if you will. But, it does have significant value, not only for that entity, but for the whole town because the full value of the three-point-eight million dollar investment in the new treatment plan is brought right into downtown immediately, as opposed to less water flow, less clean water available to the town until that connection's made. So, that's a special. And, the third, the annual town meeting article, Article Five is just the annual town meeting article. It's enterprise fund. It's a very aggressive article. Part of the reason why it's aggressive is our significant capital expenditures. We start repaying next year the bond for the treatment plan to the tune of over four-hundred-thousand dollars for the first year. That would drop off after the first year with other bonds being, finishing their duration. Also, includes a ten percent increase in rates to incorporate, incorporate, to accommodate the increased spending as well as a significant number of connection fees. We predict over the next three to four years that the water pump will bring in over twenty-five-thousand dollars a year of connection fees, which we haven't seen since the golden days of the nineties. And, that's as a result of the development at the point, the development of Fifteen Great Road, as well as three or four other housing developments that are being, being proposed that will be in the twenty to forty home. So, there's gonna be a significant amount of growth proposed in Littleton. And, the connection fees are used to pay capital expenses for the water pump to deal with these, these new uses, if you will, demand fees. So, the, so that the connection fees, which we haven't seen in at least eight or nine years at this level, will help defray the borrowing costs of the new bond as well as other type of improvements to make, both inside and outside the budget. That's basically it.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, commission is all approved and all that? We're all good to go?
Nope. But, in the sense that the, the, no, in the sense, the special for the, for the bridge crossing, it's all, there's many, many moving parts. It's a placeholder right now. It'll be pulled from town meeting if, in fact, the parts aren't codified, i.e., contractually, making sure that the risk is completely on the bettered property and not on the rapier, making sure that there's liens on the properties. And, now, the proper legal ease has to be done over the next forty-five days. So, that, from that perspective, and frankly, this was done at the last minute, but this just happened late last week. So, all these things have to come together. So, that is a placeholder article now. There's no value in that article because we don't have a value in the water main. I have my estimates, but we need to codify those estimates as well and make sure all parties are in agreement. And, if so, then it will be on the docket at special town meeting. If not, it'll be pulled.
Okay.
Quick question.
On the bridge crossing, do we have a small water main there?
No.
There's nothing at all?
Two problems there. One, no, one problem. Nineteen sixty-two, when the water main, when the bridge was put in, either they was not agreed to put that in as a betterment at the time. I believe when the 495 was put in, all utilities that pre-existed were upgraded, but anything that wasn't there, they weren't paying for. And, so, the town didn't have that done, I believe, in sixty-two. So, there's nothing there now. That, that's always been one of those laws that we wanted to have be done. And, since my days here, because that property used to be owned by General Radio and about four, five other owners, we've had that water main installation linked to the development of that property. It's gone hand in hand. And, so, we're doing that link now, other than, rather than paying for it in cash, they're paying for it in repayment of the betterment. So, it's still linked.
One of the, going back to your first statement about the state regulations coming in about the water, when is that taking place or is it still being studied?
It's, it's the regulations, that's why the swimming, swimming meaning Sustainable Water Management Initiative, that's been going off for a number of years. And, frankly, water utilities are being hammered from bad judgments made by politicians when it comes to stormwater management, as well as massive treatment, sewer treatment projects that all end up in Boston Harbor. That's really the big issue. But, because of those multi-billion dollar investments by the state years ago and frankly, twelve, ten years ago, the water purveyors are being saddled with this, this issue being that where low lying fruit that are withdrawals, although they're one of many impacts to streams, are the ones that people cannot put their arms around, regulators or those who are interested in trying to protect the water sheds and stream flow. So, those regulations have been drafted. We've worked real hard through Mass Water Works to try to minimize their impact, but they are gonna be fairly significant. It's something that, we'll see, we'll see what happens when they finally codify it and see how they're, they're affected. But, we're gonna need offsets, for example, additional water withdrawals for the drone community that we have. If we don't have our ducks in a row in terms of per capita consumption, which we're doing very, very well at, and under counterfall, which we're struggling with, as we always do, you can have that additional offsets. And, frankly, water's gonna be probably more expensive as time goes on because of these offsets. You're gonna need to put money into these things to, to help rectify matters. But, we've done a real good job. We have stormwater management. We have it numerous years. We're involved in purchase of land. The cell tower money that goes to land purchase puts Littleton way ahead of almost every community in the state in terms of, we've been very much involved with our April Water Resource Management Plan, with the Planning Board and Board of Health and Conscom. So, we really have our ducks in a row to really be able to deal with these issues. But, still, they're gonna be impactful. You want to withdraw water, how are you gonna put it back in around naturally, which we're trying to do? But, you can't do everything. Just cost money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this?
Thank you. Chris Simone with Combe Avenue. The proposed infrastructure is for a drinking water main.
It's for a water main with the Littleton Water Department, Chris. Without the Littleton Sewer Department, it's a water main for water use exclusively.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Don't wanna fix those up.
Yeah, across those lines.
Yeah, that's a good point.
All right. I think we have people here for eight, for seven C. So, if, I see school and finance here, so maybe.
We're gonna make a motion here. Number two, we're gonna support the article?
Oh, so two, yeah. Sorry.
Jump ahead.
No, jump ahead, you don't. Move the gun with your papers, Shane. I'm not ready, you know? So, now, I'm trying to jump ahead. You ready?
All right, thanks, Alvis. Move that the board has selected vote to support the following articles and direct the participation of the motions to be moved and seconded by said board on the special town meeting, Articles Three and Articles Four. And, on the annual town meeting, Articles Five and Article Eight.
Should we take eight separate?
What? How, how are you gonna do it separately?
Just vote it separately. I don't wanna support Article Eight.
All right, so, can you, yeah. All right, so, in the, in the, in the annual, just Article.
Why don't you divide it into two pieces on Article Eight?
We'll do that in the next one. So, we'll go with the special town meeting articles, Three and Four, and annual town meeting Article Five.
Okay. Motion been made?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. All right, so, it is the motion to approve, or the motion to support the following article and direct the participation preparation, I'm sorry, of the motions to be moved and seconded by said board for Article Eight, the Community Preservation Funding Article. All, what are you, what are you looking to do?
The church one. Well, I don't know. We can take the whole article as one, or you can take, or you break it up into more than?
Take it all as one. If you take it all one, in his case, I'm not putting words in milk, but I think he's only against one thing.
Right.
Maybe you break it down and say that he supports everything and then have that one separate, is that possible? We're gonna do that at the town meeting. That's how we're directing the moderator to do it, so.
Or, we're just asking him to put the option out there.
Right. So, what you're saying is, do you wanna support everything but number, what was that? The Congregational Church staying black?
Right. I'm in favor, everything except for that one. So, however you wanna do, Keith, can we, I mean, has it been broken up that minutely before?
No.
I mean, then I gotta take the launch. I mean, I'll have to go that way, I guess.
Do it as one.
Do it as one, yeah.
Article Eight.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay.
Aye.
All right. Now, we're ready to move. All right. So, like I said, there's some, I see people waiting for seven C. I don't see anyone waiting for seven, anyone from Board of Health waiting for B. And, I think we can do seven A without other people involved. So, can we move to seven C, which is a fiscal twenty-fifteen budget balancing?
Steve, can I? Was an easy one, too.
Was it?
Up and went.
Well, I see, this year, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they love this discussion.
Yeah. He really was going all the way.
Stick around.
Yeah, see? All right. All right. So, I know there's been a lot of emails and conversations happening, and Bonnie, I'll throw it to you to give us a update where we're at with the budget, that gap getting closed and closing strategies.
Okay. As you requested at your last meeting, I, we went back and took a look at budget balancing scenarios. We finished up the audits, so we took a good look at, you know, where our finances ended up at fiscal thirteen and where we are so far to date in fourteen. So, we have a lot of, a lot of new information to present. We've also received a revised request from the School Committee dated March seventeenth, so incorporated those items in this budget update. So, basically, as a reminder, the budget that we're preparing on the town sign is the level staffing budget, no increases to services or body count. And, with the revised information from the School Committee dated the seventeenth, we're looking at a school appropriation request of sixteen million eight ninety-eight towards its total revised budget request of seventeen million five fifty-eight. There's a couple of highlighted items that I put in here to show the differences between the previous request and the current. The addition of a school psychologist at approximately seventy thousand dollars plus benefits that would need to be budgeted on the town's expense side. The utilization of an additional hundred-and-sixty thousand in circuit breaker funding, which is made up in that seventy thousand that I mentioned previously, plus an additional ninety thousand dollar drawdown towards the operating budget. And, an increase of thirty-eight thousand that is representing the state's budget proposal that's out there right now, showing a Chapter Seventy-Eight increase. There's gonna be a few more versions of the budget to come out. We haven't received assessments on education yet, including school choice out or charter school tuition out. So, I don't know where the net school state aid figure's gonna end up ultimately yet. So, what I did is I just prepared a small chart to show you the changes in the school original request, my original recommended budget, and the revised request that we have. So, in the first one, the town meeting appropriation was requested at sixteen million nine fifty. There was a proposed use of reserves of circuit breaker of five hundred thousand for a total budget of seventeen million four fifty. And, looking at the circuit breaker funds that were to be received in this fiscal year, the DESE website reported that there was gonna be seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand payments coming in in fiscal fourteen. Per the DESE regulations and the DOR, the Department of Revenue, requirements for year-end accounting letters, that money has to be fully spent in the following year. So, if you get it in in fourteen, you must spend it in fifteen. You can carry it forward into fifteen, but it must be expended by the end of the year. So, I applied that towards the budget request, which would mean you'd have an appropriation of sixteen million six eighty-one, a circuit breaker use of seven sixty-nine for the same total budget figure of seventeen million four fifty. In applying the revised request, we would be looking at a town meeting appropriation of sixteen million eight ninety-eight, circuit breaker usage of six-hundred-and-sixty thousand for a total budget that's revised at seventeen million five fifty-eight. So, that's just kind of where we were and where we, where we are now. The request that, that the School Committee submitted doesn't fully resolve the fact that the circuit breaker funds received this year must be expended by the end of next year. And, I've provided you with the Department of Revenue's bulletin detailing that. I consulted with our DOR reps who have confirmed that. My auditors also confirmed it. My Department of Revenue rep reminded me that as part of the year-end transactions, if the full circuit breaker money was not expended, and I submitted the year-end paperwork in anyway, they would do an adjustment to our fund balance and require that it be closed. So, it's, it's not anything that the town has control over. It's something that's applied by the Department of Revenue. So, with that being said, for fiscal thirteen, we did have an amount of sixty-two thousand that was still remaining in the circuit breaker funds that needed to be spent. And, the initial recommendation was we needed to close that out to the general fund. I did not wanna do that. And, I worked with Steve Mark in the, in the business office, and he was, he was kind enough to provide me with some journal entries so that we could, we could move some other expenses that had been paid out of other accounts. So, we did not take the sixty-two thousand. We applied it as we needed to. It remained in the School Department reserves. But, it's going to be in our management letter for this fiscal year. And, I am gonna be required next year, if it's, if the circuit breaker funds are not spent, to close it out to fund balance. So, I just wanna have that upfront. And, again, a reminder, I kinda walked you through a timeline. Eligible circuit breaker expenses incurred in one year, for this example, fiscal thirteen, are reimbursed in the following year in fiscal fourteen. Those funds are deposited in fourteen in the circuit breaker revolving account, and they're, they're used in the third year, fiscal fifteen. So, anything we get in this year, we must use next year. And, as another item on the, the application of the thirty-eight thousand and after Seventy-Eight that was referenced, we stopped doing the net school state aid calculation last year when Chapter Seventy-Eight was flat for the last few years. Really hasn't been keeping pace with the demands that the department needs, as with regular state aid. Regular state aid has been flat also. So, last year, we did a significant adjustment to the calculation on the school appropriation. And, I think the, the increase was seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand or something like that in this fiscal year. So, again, we're not applying that practice as we had in years when Chapter Seventy-Eight was robust. Also, in going through the year-end paperwork, we've got an additional update on circuit breaker funds. The state last year was supposed to send nine-hundred-and-eight thousand in circuit breaker reimbursements. They did not. They missed a payment, or they didn't miss a payment. They applied a payment late. Through no fault of the School Department or the town or anybody else, it's just, they did not send it by June thirtieth. It arrived in July, and it was in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. That payment, combined with the seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand that we're getting this year, must be spent next year. Whatever the actual receipts are, must be spent in the following year. So assuming that we get the payments in, um, and everything is, is trued up at June thirtieth, there'll be approximately a million thirty-two in actual circuit breaker receipts that must be spent in the following year. Um, so, in addition to that, I, what I did is kinda took you through this year's circuit breaker money to show you how it worked this year. For fiscal fourteen, the school budget as presented was, uh, sixteen million nine forty-seven, and of that, there was an appropriation of sixteen million four hundred from town meetings, and five hundred and forty-seven in reserves were projected to be used. Um, they actually need to use six hundred and forty-five thousand because that's what we actually got in last year. Uh, so that's a ninety-eight thousand dollar difference. So there's two options on that. They, they can increase the spending or decrease spending in other accounts, but in any case, it had to be spent. Um, it, it needs to be spent in this fiscal year in full.
Any more? I just, we've kinda talked about this for a couple of weeks.
Yes, one more.
Okay.
In case I get through this next part. Um, so based on all of these factors, and I know I've, I've kinda walked through this several meetings, but, um, I revised the recommended funding plan for fiscal fifteen with the full knowledge that whatever is received in the circuit breaker funds this year has to be spent. So what I've done is taken the school department budget minus the request as revised this week, minus the thirty-eight thousand, um, because I don't know whether we're gonna get that, and we're not using that net school state aid formula anyway. Um, I backed out, um, so that brings the budget request to seventeen million five twenty. I backed up the full circuit breaker usage of a million thirty-two, which would mean a town meeting appropriation of sixteen million four eighty-eight. Um, this complies with the, the full circuit breaker usage requirement from DESE and DOR. It would keep the school choice funds intact as reserves in case there are, you know, unexpected expenses or, um, things that they need to adjust for, um, in the, through the school year. Um, it would provide the school committee with the budget requests, um, including the newly proposed school psychologist, and it would close the overall budget deficit for fiscal two thousand and fifteen across the town.
Close it.
It would close it. It would leave a small surplus of about thirteen thousand dollars and change. The only thing that I would caution on this is that this is an unusually high circuit breaker year. So we are applying it as required towards the budget. If we didn't get this amount next year, which I wouldn't think that we would, because it's, it's, again, an unusually high year, the only way to offset that is to either supplement the appropriation, the town meeting appropriation, or draw down additionally, um, other reserves. And I've just kinda given you an estimate, you know, just rolling over the same level of reserve usage, it would mean another four hundred thousand approximately, um, would need to be drawn out of school choice funds. So this would draw their reserves down. Um, or town meeting would need to step up and fund that, um, by way of a, another appropriation. So early estimates, just taking like a three percent increase to the school department budget, we're talking anywhere from five hundred and twenty-five thousand to nine hundred thousand that the appropriation would need to increase in fiscal sixteen, just to sustain that type of increase. So this is kind of a one-year, you know, pump, um, per se, but it is required by DOR and, and DESE. You do have to use these, these reserves on fine to the budget.
All right. I'd like to go to schools for, to hear from them. I don't know if the board has any questions for us, school. So, go to school.
No.
Do you want to go to school?
It makes sense to me.
All right, go to school. So, uh, let me hear, Kelly, Darrell, Mike, Chuck, Alex, anybody. Steve, I think, um, you know, what we've been going back and forth with is circuit breaker funds need to be spent this year, they don't need to be spent. I'm seeing some coming together in some of the revised budgets that you submitted. It seems to be like we're trying to meet somewhere in between. I don't know if we've met anywhere between on this, um, thought about the requirement or whether or not they need to be spent, so I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, looking at the app, I say that in terms of Bonnie's analysis of the numbers, uh, we, we agree. We, we, we see where the money's coming, the circuit breaker funds. Uh, the, the one thing that we're disagreeing on at the moment is, is that there's, it seems like we're equating budgeting with spending, um, and there's a difference. Typically, we do budget the use of circuit breaker in school choice funds. In, in the last several years, we budgeted more use of those funds than we typically have in previous years. In previous years, we tried not to be reliant on those, and we allowed them to build up over time, so that we had, you know, reserves there in case we had unexpected expenditures during a school year, we wouldn't have to go back to a special town meeting for further appropriation. So it appears that there's more of an emphasis on spending those down in a given year, which is fine. We can work with that. But we don't necessarily agree that it has to be budgeted. There are ways for us to spend that money outside of the initial budgeting process. For instance, if we have unexpected expenditures, you know, new kids moving into the district, uh, changing services, things like that, then we would have that money available to meet those requirements, which is what we've done in the past, that's been our strategy in the past. We can also prepay for special education services on circuit breaker. In our initial analysis that we've done in the last couple of days, we indicate that for this fiscal year, we could prepay up to five hundred thousand dollars worth of services that we then wouldn't incur, uh, out of our appropriated budget in FY sixteen. And then, you know, we haven't had enough time to really think about it in detail, but there are conceivably other strategies we could use if we realize that we had, the budget that we put forth was pretty accurate in terms of actual spending, and that we weren't gonna be able to, or we weren't gonna be required to spend down the circuit breaker during normal operating budget items, we would have other strategies beyond prepaying for special, uh, education. We prefer this strategy because I think it allows us to keep the flexibility of meeting unexpected expenditures, which is something we've all agreed on as boards and, and finance committee over the years. We don't really wanna get too far away from that. Uh, and it also helps us to make sure that we understand the, uh, accurate representation of the school spending versus the town appropriation. One of the current concerns we have is, is that the way we do it in the, in the Model Bonnie Show just a few minutes ago is that our appropriation would only go up effectively eighty-eight thousand dollars over last year, but our spending is going up a significant amount. And it puts us at risk next year of having to acquire a much bigger appropriation. And it could be difficult for the town to have to make those kinds of decisions. Um, so we would prefer to retain the flexibility. We're open to, you know, talking about what is the right number of budgeting of the circuit breaker versus holding an amount of reserve relative to, in the past years, it's been, how much should we spend and hold in reserve and build that reserve up? Okay, now the, the debate, the, the analysis is gonna change towards, rather than looking out on a longer time horizon, it's just gonna be within that one fiscal year, but we would like to be able to, you know, work those numbers and retain some flexibility rather than just budget the whole amount and, and spend it accordingly and be constricted on how we spend it.
We trust? What's that? Yes, we're in finance, okay. Sure, finance is here, you?
Yeah, well, actually, we have a few members here. We obviously haven't had a chance to meet since we got this done on, on Friday afternoon, but, uh, so I'm speaking personally, not on behalf of the board. But I'd like to kinda take you back a few months. We, we essentially had most of the base pieces of the budget, uh, at the end of November after we had the all-boards session, and you folks had a meeting in early December. I give you great credit, you took some early stands, and I think, uh, you know, you, you spoke clearly about the need to address the structural deficit. That structural deficit is a little hard to find in these spreadsheets, but it's still there. Our revenue projections are at just under three percent growth rate, but our, um, our, um, projected, um, expenditures are just under four percent. That's carried throughout. So we understood, you understood back in December, that the real way to present a sustainable budget was to address that head-on, and that means dealing with, uh, all the departments, not just the schools. Um, this is, I, I, I see that the math adds up at the bottom of the page, but I'm never comfortable, and it's never been the town's policy to be comfortable with funding, uh, operating expenses with one-time windfall revenues. And that certainly sounds like that's what we're dealing with here. Second point is with the schools. You know, I, I, the record will show, I've been perfectly willing to criticize my colleagues in the schools when I thought there was something, uh, that needed criticizing there, but I'm very comfortable that, that they've been cooperative throughout this budget process. I would prefer to see in the line item budget earlier on, but reality is state law, uh, requires, and our budget planning is predicated on just a bottom-line figure anyways. The only, uh, distinction from that they made is a total of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Seventy thousand dollars for the psychology, which I believe is a mandate from, uh, sped audit, is it, right, or something along that. The other is the thirty-eight thousand dollars that the legislature is specifically earmarking for chapter seventy increase. That's what they intended for. So I think their requests as a baseline are perfectly reasonable, and I, I don't think they should be singled out as being a cause of any of our problems. The issues in, in dealing with the, uh, the reserve funds are problematic, because the state is now saying something different from what our practice had been internally. Internally, we've been beating up on the schools for years for, uh, not protecting their reserve funds, so I certainly have sympathy for them wanting to be cautious about expending all that, um, down too quickly. The bottom line concern I have, which I still have, is, you know, we've got two spreadsheets here. One shows a structural deficit of three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and the other shows thirteen thousand dollar, um, surplus, and not a cut's been made. And yet we know structurally, the only way we're gonna be able to present sustainable budgets year after year is if we address that problem, expenditure versus revenue. And this makes the math work, but it doesn't solve the problem. And I, I just wanna make sure that that's considered.
Is there anything?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have to agree with the, the, the one-time windfall. Um, and if we can determine the actual amount for a circuit breaker next, going forward next year, and build that into the budget instead of the one point three two million, um, I'd feel more comfortable because there is a operational, you know, deficit that we're gonna be dealing with next year. So, but my, my concern with the school would be, um, the balance of the circuit breaker money being spent in fiscal year fifteen. To ensure that you can, you know, it's being spent for those items like case, any type of increase in, uh, sped cost, you know, that would make me feel more comfortable than just saying, all right, there's six hundred thousand dollars in that circuit breaker account that you can just go out and do whatever you want with, so.
Well, we, we have to spend it on, the circuit breaker money has to be spent on special education. We have no, no choice in that regard. So whatever strategies we implement, that money has to go into that, those services.
So going back to my original, uh, my first point of, you know, taking a look at what, what that projected, uh, circuit breaker cost for next year is, 'cause I don't agree with kicking the can down the road and having to deal with a four hundred thousand dollar operational issue next year when we should, you know, head it off now.
I, I think it would be helpful going forward if we can come to some type of an agreement on the, the presentation of the budget, because I think it's important to show the, the circuit breaker funding out there as a, as an offset to the budget, along with whatever items might be an offset to the budget. And it would protect us going forward, should circuit breaker funding get reduced, should it get increased? We can justify the change in the appropriation annually without, it'll, it'll be more transparent. A lot of the communities that have adapted to this, um, new, you know, new requirement or, um, change in budgeting, requiring the use of the circuit breaker funds in full, have presented the budget to show, here's the total budget, here's the offset from circuit breaker, here's the offset from school choice, here's the offset from busing, transportation fees. And they have maybe five or six categories that are used as the offset. And that way, when one changes radically, you can justify the appropriation that needs to adapt for that.
We could certainly talk about, you know, given that this is a new way of, of using the money. But I will say that anytime we use circuit breaker or school choice, it's been clearly represented in our budget presentations. And if we have had to use more money after the budget was voted because of unforeseen circumstances, that, of course, is talked about in open meeting and voted on. And we also have regular updates on what our balances are in our, all of our revolving funds. We focus mostly on school choice and, and, uh, circuit breaker because they're the biggest ones, but we get information on our transportation fees, athletic fees, food service fees, I mean, all the different things, uh, that we have revolving funds for. So we're certainly amenable to talking about how we present them, but, you know, we, we have that information, and that information is being presented. Maybe not in the exact way, uh, exactly at the budget cycle, but it's, it's definitely out there.
Is that? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, I, I just, I just wanna be clear here. This is what it sounds like to me. Um, if you retain the money in the circuit breaker, in the reserves, um, do you then have the authority to spend that money above and beyond what your voted budget is?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so to Mr. Glavy's comment, um, about, uh, not using the money in the way that was suggested by Bonnie, um, assuming that something comes along, and they do, uh, decide to spend their money above and beyond what's appropriated by the town, then the structural deficit is, reappears. And, um, and we have very little control over it. The school committee has control over it, um, by voting whether they're gonna spend above and beyond their budget. I think the way that's proposed is, um, a lot clearer, and, and, and it's really understandable. And, but I think either way, the comment about structural deficit, that, I don't think we're kicking the can down the road. We've had this kind of structural deficit every year as we went along, and each year, we address it on a year-by-year basis. So I'd like the plan as proposed.
By point, by Tom Astraire, Assistant Tom Astraire.
One quick question for Bonnie. How long is the circuit breaker that does the state say you have to pay it by a certain date? I, I'm confused because the, you take it and you can put it in reserve in the past, but you can't do it now?
What, the, the way that you can do it is, um, you get, you bill it in thirteen, you collect it in fourteen, and you can spend it in fifteen. And what that allows you to do is you know what you're getting, so you can budget it. You can, you can plan your budget appropriately. Um, if you're spending it as you're getting it, it's kind of, it's difficult to manage, you know, budgetary process. Um, but the requirement to completely spend has been, probably in the last two or three years, um, something that DOR has been looked at, and, and in particular, they looked at it this year.
But is it, is it, is it a suggestion from the DOR, or is it?
No, it's mandated.
It's mandated?
Manded. It's in my year-end letter. Close circuit breaker to the general fund. And it wasn't an issue last year, because there, it, it was fully spent in the manner that it needed to be. It's just this year, there was an extra amount in there that would have need to be closed, and we, we didn't. We managed to, to make summaries to, to clear that out. Uh, I would also, you know, just point out that this isn't the only reserve. The school choice funds are a very important component of the reserves, um, and, and the finance committee has been very strong in advocating that, that those reserves be maintained. And I, I think the estimate for fiscal fifteen ending would be about a million dollars.
Reserve.
And then how are those spent? School choice?
You know, it depends on each budget year where we see, you know, depending on what we're gonna get versus appropriation versus what we feel we need to spend. Typically, it's spent on salaries.
But there's no restriction like there is for a circuit breaker?
No, it's wide open.
Right.
That's really the only one that's wide open.
But you do it at a meeting, and it's all transfers and everything, it opened.
And just in response to, to what Alex had to say, again, we don't just decide to spend it and don't bother telling anybody.
Right.
I mean, if we spend it, we spend it for a particular reason. The difference is, is that in the past, if we didn't have to spend it, we didn't. We just held on to it, and we built the reserve up with a goal towards, you know, typically, the goal is, there were years where we, the finance committee was, your reserve is too low. We would be much more hap, much happier, much more comfortable if you could get it up to, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million. And we always were kind of floating around in that target, and we were pretty good at maintaining it. Now it's, we really don't have that luxury anymore. It doesn't matter what the target is, it's, if you get it, you have to spend it. So we don't have the luxury of saying, well, we budgeted very well this year, we were very fortunate, we didn't have any unexpected expenditures. We'll just let it go from, we thought it was gonna be eight hundred, went up to nine fifty, good for us, aren't we happy? We're all happy, we're all in the same room, we're all happy. We don't have that luxury now. We're going to have to spend it in, in the year. And again, I'll reiterate, that doesn't mean we have to budget for it. We wanna keep the flexibility of meeting those unexpected expenditures, and we will invoke strategies for spending it if we don't have to use it for unexpected expenditures. When we do decide to invoke those strategies, everyone will know what it was spent on, why it was spent, and what the benefit is to the town and/or the schools by virtue of having spent it.
Sure.
So, my concern, um, is that you're planning to spend beyond your budget because you're going to have excess funds that you have to spend. That's where I'm concerned. You, you have a budget, and by the way, we're gonna have to spend this money. So after we vote the budget at town meeting, when the townspeople figure out where their budget is, um, we have an unknown number, well, now we have a known number, that you're gonna spend above and beyond that budget. That's where my concern lies.
Yeah, and it is a concern, but that was the concern in any year where we actually would've had to spend it. It was money that would've been spent that wasn't budgeted. But that was, the policy was to have money that wasn't budgeted to spend in case you needed it. And that, that hasn't changed. The only thing that's changed is if we don't need it in terms of spending it during the current budget cycle, because of unexpected expenditures, changes in, in the number of kids we service, or the number of types of services that we have to provide, or changes in the way our vendors bill us, whatever it might be, these things that do happen, then we're going to have to spend it, and we will have to make a determination about what the best way to do that is. You know, as we get near the end of a given fiscal year, we will plan for it, it won't trump out at us. We'll track these monies the way we always do, relative to the, uh, you know, as the school year goes on in the budget on schools. So really, the only change is that we might have to invoke a strategy we haven't used in the past. Everything else is just the way we've always done it.
But I don't think there's a might about it. If there's a surplus of money, you're gonna, and you have to spend it, you're gonna spend it.
So we might have to spend it because two kids move into the district in the middle of the year. That could've happened any year, and we would've spent the money. And if that happens, then that's what we'll use it for.
And I agree totally with those points.
But we wouldn't have budgeted for that because we wouldn't have known it was gonna happen.
The difference with this year is now we know, sitting here in advance, you're gonna spend that money. You have to spend it, or it goes to general fund.
But the problem is, is if we don't hold some in reserve, and those two kids move into town, and we've depleted our reserves, and we have no way of dealing with it, then we're gonna... we're gonna go into a scenario that we've always tried to avoid, everyone in this room's been trying to avoid for years, which is going to a special town meeting for additional appropriation. And the money, it, it has to be spent on special ed, so it's not like we're gonna be out spending it on anything else that we would like to spend it on, it will be spent on special ed services.
I don't think we're both seeing it the same way, but I, I think.
That's mandated, it has to be spent on special ed services. And let's, let's get it straight, it's not a result, it's not a reserve, it's revolving fund.
Could we, I, I'm just thinking, um, could we put in the budget request, um, a circuit breaker reserve amount in your budget, knowing that, you know, maybe of the million dollars, you know, seven hundred's gonna be spent, and there's three hundred that you're gonna need and leave as reserve? It's gonna increase your appropriated budget, but it's gonna be offset by, in part by that.
I mean, we, we can certainly discuss that type of implementation. I mean, like I said, we're, we're open to different ways of doing it. We're just not comfortable budgeting the entire amount, cause it's never what we've, we've never done that before. And while we do understand the need to spend it, there's nothing in the regulation that says we have to budget it accordingly.
But you said you could prepay it too, right?
We can prepay.
So, if you hold it, and you don't have those two kids moving to town, you can prepay it and then?
One of the strategies would be to just prepay to case or other third service, special ed providers.
And then, so, coming out the, next year, there would be less?
We'd be, or?
But then if that was theoretically gonna be used out of the circuit breaker funds, you have more circuit breaker that year.
Right.
Right, okay.
Not that it's ever dollar for dollar.
Right, no, but, yeah, but fifty thousand, you don't, you don't spend, that you spend this year, you don't have to spend next year, so maybe you have that fifty thousand there. So, I guess, I think what else, what's a?
As an offset.
Yeah. So, I guess what I'm hearing is, um, I think everybody seems to agree there's some sort of unsustainable portion of this. It seems that you're going a little bit.
I, I guess everything, you, you, it's unsustainable, next year may not, if you don't, if you use one-time funds for, um, some increases for operating expenses, it's not, it doesn't seem sustainable. And I think you've said something about that. I just wonder how that's gonna be addressed in this new budget.
So, let's think about this too, this, and this has happened in the past. We budget X dollars to spend on special education services, we have our, our revolving funds there if we need them. And indeed, we do have to use them to the tune of, say, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for whatever purpose. What has happened is, we will come back and we'll say, our appropriation, the jump-off point, whatever we thought it was gonna be, just went up a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, because circuit breaker is not dollar for dollar. We were able to use circuit breaker this year, cause the reserve was there and we used it, but we can't use it again and again, so we're going to have, our appropriation is going to have to go up, or if we can't, we're gonna have to figure out a way to make the budget work, given the fact that we're spending a hundred and seventy-five thousand more than we budgeted last year because of increased services that we have to provide.
Right, right. So, how do we make, how do you make a sustainable budget and maintain reserves?
Well, again, well, we will.
I'm gonna ask him, sorry.
I mean, now, because now, because, right, I mean, what would happen now is, is, you know, Bonnie talked about this, our reliance on school choice, what we've been able to do in the past is build up enough of the circuit breaker revolver and the school choice revolving funds, and we've had the luxury of, if it's a requirement to, to spend more money on, on our special ed services, circuit breaker's there to take care of. If it's something else that we, we don't, can't use circuit breaker for, then the school choice money is there to use. Now, what conceivably happened is, is that if we deplete the circuit breaker too quickly, we might very well end up putting school choice funds into special ed services. I mean, you know, the budget's got a lot of different ways of being spent. There's all kinds of different ways we can spend it.
And there's no guarantees that we're gonna receive all that money this year. We had a late payment last year, we could have a late payment this year, and we'd be down to?
And historically, the rate of reimbursement.
School choice, you mean?
Yeah, no, no, for, for certain. Cause that's not, it's not, it, it's a budget item, and, and the rate of reimbursement has fluctuated significantly over the year.
Right. Yeah. I guess, you know, still trying to grasp, how do we get, you know, how do we bite the bullet and get everything we need, which to me seems to be, you know, stick with the appropriation, appropriation that Bonnie is, has recommended, you know, save some reserves and, you know, get the, and, and fund the mandates that you've been told you have to have, and the psychologists, and what was the other, twenty-three thousand or thirty-eight thousand, was it?
No, thirty-eight thousand was, we hope it'll be an increase in chapter seven.
So, how do we get all that? Doesn't happen? Yeah, all right, I mean.
I mean, Bonnie, the rest of Bonnie's memo talks about, if we don't do it this way, these are the other ways we can do it, and there's.
All right, so where do we go from here then?
Okay. Um, okay, so if, we'll look at the school appropriation as requested, um, the deficit is three hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars for the school two thousand and fifteen. There's a number of different ways that you can balance that. To the right page, okay. So, there's a number, number of different ways you can close the gap. It's about a one point six percent of total department operating budgets, which does not include debt service, because that's something I can't reduce, um, for employee benefits. Um, you can close it by equal reductions over the fiscal two thousand and fifteen requested appropriations, um, which would be about one point six four percent of both the town and the school appropriations unilaterally. And again, this is just an option. Um, you'd have to reduce the town appropriations by a hundred and nineteen thousand and the school appropriation, um, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. You could look at equal increases over the fiscal fourteen budget as exists today, um, which would allow for a one point oh nine percent increase, um, both in the school and town appropriations, or seventy-seven thousand in town budgets and a hundred and seventy-eight thousand in schools. You could decide to do targeted reductions. You could eliminate any proposed additions to staffing in the fiscal two thousand and fifteen budget, such as the school psychologist that was proposed. You could target the additions that were brought in for fiscal two thousand and fourteen, like the fire department staffing that was new. Um, you could do, you could continue the, the reduction of the park and rec general fund subsidy that was, um, kind of held off, um, for the last two years. Or you could target any other budget item or service, um, for reduced application in fifteen. Um, or any other combination of any of the above. I would point, point out that last fiscal year, we went to town meeting out of balance by about ninety-seven thousand dollars, with the hopes that state aid and, and local receipts would true up in the fall, and they did. Um, so we were able to go, again, adopt a budget in May, about a hundred thousand dollars out of balance, and it ended up being okay in, in September when we received the final receipts. I would probably be comfortable with that approach again. I wouldn't push it anything beyond the hundred thousand, I think that's, you know, too far to stretch it with the projections that we've got in place. Um, you know, we still are looking at state aid fluctuations, um, I've seen hardly any increases, even the thirty-eight thousand that was referenced is very small in, in totality, um, for state aids, and we don't have any assessment information. So, I could net out behind the eight ball when they come up with the assessments. Local receipts are still being monitored to include new growth and, um, collective bargaining agreements as we go forward.
So, no good news?
No good news, I'm sorry.
Oh, good, cheers.
So, there was nothing that recommended cutting just townside?
No.
No, I thought that ain't right.
But that is, I mean.
And I hate to get back into that conversation.
We're not recommending that.
Yeah, right, right, okay. All right. So, where do we go from here? I mean, we're not gonna get any good news between now and May, it sounds like, because you've said that, uh.
Typically, we won't receive final cherry sheets until, you know, mid to end summer.
Yeah.
So, I won't know what's happening.
I don't like going in on balance, it worked out last year, but I don't like, it just seems like you're rolling the dice, and then come, if you have to cut one point six percent now, you, that's, you end up cutting in November, that's three point two percent, right? Because you're trying to cut, make up that whole thing in one year.
Right, effort through the year.
Effort through the year, so.
So, the two nineties?
Three ninety-six, three ninety.
Yeah, to, the, the, the extra circuit breaker, the last payment, what was it, two ninety?
Two sixty-three.
Two sixty-three. And so, that's pretty much a, we won't call it windfall, but at one time?
It's a, yeah, it's, it's a one-time, one-time, um, appropriation reimbursement.
Back in two thousand and twelve, uh, it was one point, one point one four three million that we received, and I don't remember how we handled that either going in, but I think that's when we could have the rollover in the reserves. So, that's, that may have been an easier task to handle. I think if the, 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 um, finance committee and the, the school can maybe talk about that, two, two hundred thousand dollars, two sixty, and come up with some type of solution, uh, the, as far as the impact moving forward to fiscal year sixteen, how we're gonna deal with that reduction, because it won't be there again, um, but use it for this fiscal year, I think that would be beneficial to both sides, um, to have that discussion. So, that would be my recommendation. And that gets it down to about the hundred thousand where we were last year, and, uh, we see what the receipts are coming, um, special town meeting in November, if that's agreeable with the, with the, with the school.
I mean, we're planning on being at the finance committee meeting tomorrow, and we can certainly, you know, continue our discussions, you know, that have been ongoing since we started this process, and, uh, you know, see what we can, we can get to, and we can, I can get back with the superintendent and the business manager tomorrow too. Um, you know, we're, we're more than happy to continue the dialogue about it. Just like I say, really, it's not a question of being uncomfortable spending the money, it's just, you know, making sure that we retain our flexibility.
Sure.
And making sure that we all understand that however we spend the money, you know, if we are doing it in a way that, uh, puts us in a tricky situation, that we all understand that, and we realize that, you know, it needs to get dealt with down the road, and it's gonna get dealt with, you know, appropriate manner relative to all the departments, you know, that, that's the biggest thing.
Yeah, and I think, I think that if, um, if the, if the resolution of, you know, as we talk through this, um, or dialogue, as you say, through this, uh, process, we're already thinking about sixteen, you know? Uh, and if some, you know, through that process, it comes up, look at, I think that would leave approximately three hundred thousand still in that circuit breaker for fiscal year fifteen, um, just in case you have those two kids move in, just in case you have that case, uh, increase, that you'll have that flexibility and still have the, um, school choice money that you won't have to touch. Uh, I think if we could get to that point, um, you know, I think the, the totality of the budget and going into a unbalanced for a hundred thousand as we did last year is doable, but that's my opinion.
I think we should try to avoid it, but if we have to, we can do it.
Um, I just think that's rolling the dice. I don't know, except then if the receipts come in, I mean, fifty thousand dollars short, then you're looking at trying to find that, fifty thousand dollars in a six-month period. Just a moment.
You know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the approach that we took last year. It was close, but we, you know, we have very conservative estimates.
Didn't we talk at one point about covering ourselves in a way that we kept some of the capital projects? We didn't actually commit to the capital projects until after the November?
No, that, that wasn't around the operating budget, but it was around, uh, funding capital, that we specifically waited one year to see how much snow and ice money we had left over so that we could spend the unused surplus at the fall town meeting, not for the operating budget.
Mr. Chairman, do you have something else?
Just to follow up on, you know, the resolution that we'll continue the dialogue tomorrow night, when we're sitting at the front of the room, you're welcome to come, by the way, and join us tomorrow night if you'd like, otherwise, um, you know, I'm sure, uh, you know, Bonnie will be there, it's good to hear the school committee's coming. Um, it's also important to keep in mind that anything, uh, that's in between the two extremes as proposed is gonna mean pain somewhere along the way, uh, yeah, so we need to keep that in mind. That's, you know, Bonnie listed some of the likely places to, to find savings along that line, and just on a personal note, I, I know last year when we, we kind of, uh, proactively put in a, you know, essentially an operating deficit, I think we had specific reasons to think that that was gonna be resolved. I, that's, that was a one-time thing, I felt comfortable, and I'd, I'd feel pretty uncomfortable about doing that as a common practice.
Yeah, yeah, once is, once is something you can try, and twice decides to become habit, and then, you know, there's a hundred thousand, it comes to a hundred thousand, and that's just, it's slippery slope, that's where I'm worried. I know you're not advocating that, but, uh, you know, it's a band-aid you use this often.
I think, I think if we get to, um, at least that number, we can then implement some of those strategies that Bonnie brought forward.
Yeah, if you have a smaller number to work with.
You have a smaller number to work with, lay it out upfront before May town meeting and say, look at, if in fact this goes down, it's a point five percent across the board for everybody.
Once I get the, the quarterly, the March thirty-first actual send, I'll have a much better idea of where we are. That's where our big, uh, local receipts come in, so.
Okay, so next meeting, another day? Nature of the beast, April. That's why I think elections should be in the members, the budget should be in the members, not the, you know, running, he's phoning in for the last couple months. All right, thank you everybody for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, now we'll go back to bond anticipation notes.
This is good. Actually, what we got is the, the long form of the report from Standard Poor's, along with our, um, short-term borrowing rating of SP one plus, which is the highest for short-term borrowing.
All right, sorry Keith, a lot of side conversations, you want to go again?
That's okay, that, uh, this is the first time that we've gone out and borrowed since we've, uh, had a triple A bond rating, um, and the, uh, ratings came in pretty good. Steve can talk to us about that, uh, a year, just by way of comparison, a year ago, when we, uh, we borrowed a, we had a bond anticipation note for a year, five, five point three million, it was zero point two two seven percent interest. This year, for the longer term, uh, or, I'm sorry, for the borrowing that we're doing on four point eight million now, we're getting zero point one oh six percent, which is less, although we're also doing some, um, we're doing a, a lesser amount of borrowing, four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for a whole year. That's coming in a little notch above, uh, zero point five percent, but it's, it's all pretty good, I mean, it's.
The big telling moment is beginning August with bond, that four in the world being what we're doing there. So, hopefully, a triple A rating gets us a lot of bids now.
And that will be long-term borrowing?
Yeah, this is, this is still short-term borrowing.
This is, this is two short-term notes.
Okay, and this will be wrapped up into the long-term, probably?
Uh, the, the smaller note, the four hundred and eighty-five thousand, this includes the track and Russell Street and the, the Foster Street store, um, this will be the last time you see that, we're paying that off next year. And you should note that the Russell Street ban and the track, the debt exclusions, we've paid one hundred percent of that inside the levy. So, it'll be gone as of FY fifteen.
Beautiful, good. Okay.
Moving up the Board of Selecting vote to adopt the, uh, the form of the vote prescribed by Bond Council, a copy of which is attached here too and made part hereof, relative to the sale of the following general obligation municipal purpose bond anticipation notes of the town. One, four million, eight hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred dollars dated April eleventh, twenty fourteen, and payable August fifteenth, twenty fourteen. Two, TD Securities USA LLC, at the net interest cost of zero point one zero six four five two percent. And two, four hundred and eighty-five thousand dated April eleventh, twenty fourteen, payable April tenth, twenty fifteen, to Jeffries LLC, and the net interest cost of zero point five one eight percent.
Second. Motion been made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Please don't forget to.
Oh, yeah, thanks, yeah, oh, oh, great, thanks.
It's very important that we get it off.
All right, great, thanks.
All right. Seven B, community septic system repair loan.
This is a request from the, uh, the Board of Health. At town meeting last year, they brought an article forward to borrow three hundred thousand dollars under the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust program, uh, to, to have a septic system repair program, uh, in Littleton. We've, uh, the, the next step is filing the funding application, which, which our finance team has, has put together, uh, along with, uh, other staff. The Board of Health did, uh, in order to bring it here, I wanted to get a, a vote out of the Board of Health, which they did, to ask you to proceed with, uh, with the submission of the application to secure the funding. to secure the funding.
So we just need to second there or to follow up the vote?
Yes, to.
Follow up the vote, okay.
It's not required legally, but it's the way we do things around here.
Right.
We want to, we don't want staff just submitting an application in without the Board's approval.
Okay. All right, that's good. Chairman?
With the Board of Select, we vote pursuant to Article 30 of the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, and as requested by the Board of Health to authorize submission of an application to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust to borrow $300,000 for the repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems.
Motion been made, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh, let's see, minutes?
Move that the Board of Select will vote to approve the minutes of their meeting on Monday, May 17, 2014.
Second. Motion been made, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain because I wasn't here.
Move that the Board of Select will vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Chapter 30A, subsection 21A, two, section two, to go into executive session to conduct strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not to convene an open session thereafter.
Slough and Carr?
Aye.
Aye, Slough and Knox?
Aye.
Slough and Curtin?
Aye.
Thank you very much.